All right. Good evening and welcome to Monday, May 15th, 2023 City Council Meeting. An invocation will be given by Chris Whiting. He is a former City Councilmember. And please stand for the invocation and please remain standing for the Pledge of Allegiance.
If you'd all please bow. Lord God, we come here tonight and thank you for the lives of each person in this room and each person in this city. And we pray your blessings upon this meeting and these proceedings tonight, Lord. May you grant the spirit of good judgment to those we've entrusted to make the decisions to move this city forward. And may you give us all out here, whether we agree or disagree with those things that are decided upon tonight, to realize that there is more that brings us together than that drives us apart. And let us lean into that understanding as a body here tonight, as a city and as the body of our leaders in front of us. We pray this all in your name. Amen.
Amen. Please join me. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Madam City Clerk, please call the roll.
Councilmember Fears.
Here.
Perkins.
Here.
Stewart.
Here.
McCandless.
Here.
Steinmeier.
Here.
Hobart.
Here.
Mayor Rowland.
Here.
Now we have citizens' requests. I would entertain a motion to... on the rules. If non-residents need to speak, we need to waive the rules to allow that to happen. Would someone make a motion in a second, please?
So moved.
It's moved. Is there a second?
Second.
There's a motion in a second to set the rules aside to allow a non-citizen to speak. Any discussion? Seeing none, Madam City Clerk, please call the roll.
Councilmember Fears.
Yes.
Perkins.
Yes.
Stewart.
Yes.
McCandless.
Yes.
Steinmeier.
Yes.
Hobart.
Yes.
Mayor Rowland.
Yes. The rule change is approved, seven to zero, so non-residents can vote. Yep. And if I could indulge the body just for a second and allow Councilmember Fears to just make a real quick statement.
I just want to welcome Jackson Cadwallader, who is from Troop 201. He's working on building a Better World badge in Cub Scouts, and he's working on his way to get over to Boy Scouts. Just want to welcome him tonight and thank you for coming out. I hope we don't have to endure too much of that. All right. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember. Very good. So we've got a healthy stack of folks who want to speak this evening, and you are welcome here, and I'm glad you're here. First one is Cheryl Roorman. And if you could come up and state your name and your address, please. And then next up after Cheryl will be Beth Franklin. So, very good.
Hi.
Cheryl, state your name and your address.
I'm Cheryl Roorman, and I live at 605 East Rankin Road. And I'm here tonight to speak for the integrity of our neighborhood. I would like to ask the City Council to uphold the city's previous decision on the short-term rental at 509 East Rankin Road. I would ask you support the voters and our community members by honoring our zoning and planning commission's previous decision on this matter. I have informed city officials and my City Councilmember, Mr. Steinmeier, on a weekly basis in regard to this extremely problematic short-term rental that has operated in our neighborhood since September 2022 while the owners reside in Utah. Thank you for your consideration.
Thank you. Beth Franklin is next, and then Norma Higby is going to be ready to go after that, so...
Hello. Mayor and City Councilmembers, my name is Beth Franklin. I live at 1945 South Lake Drive in Independence. I'm going to read my comments tonight because I don't want to miss anything, and I want to keep them moving. I'm speaking tonight about short-term rentals, not about a specific applicant, but about short-term rentals in general. I've thought a lot about the topic because I'm a Realtor. I've got 25 years of experience, and over the years, I've helped all kinds of people buy and sell all kinds of properties all over town. I hear a lot about neighbors, good and bad. In the past, I've owned rental properties myself, too. I believe there are a couple of applicants here tonight to appeal the decisions of the planning commission. I happened to attend that planning commission meeting, and truthfully, I was disappointed about a couple of the decisions that were made. I believe the decision was made to deny two applications based on comments by neighbors with some very strong opinions. The neighbors seemed to be concerned that they weren't going to know the people who were living in the house, and that when they were there, they were not going to be good neighbors. I've really considered this issue to try to understand why it bothered me so much and why I feel compelled to talk to you about it tonight. I think the main problem I had with the process was the notion that the neighbors get to approve who's moving into the neighborhood. It reminded me of a time when people thought they couldn't control their neighborhood and exclude people who maybe had a different lifestyle, who had a different religion, or maybe a different skin color. Now, I absolutely know that was not the purpose of this, but it felt like that to me. When a house is sold to someone who's going to live there, neighbors can face all the same issues. Haven't you ever had a bad neighbor? The one that starts mowing the yard at 6:00 or 7:00 in the morning on Saturday, or maybe never mows at all, or has that dog that barks constantly day in and day out? How about even a great neighbor that has a graduation party, and both sides of the streets are lined with cars, and always somebody's driveway gets blocked? What's the recourse, then? If you don't feel like you can knock on the door of your neighbor and talk to them about it, you call code enforcement; in extreme cases, you call the police. But you can't make a move. We live in a city, and we need to learn to try to learn how to live together in close quarters. It's the same for long-term rentals. Most people believe that rental properties are not as well-kept as homes that are owner-occupied, and that may or may not be the case. But if there are problems, neighbors have the same remedy. They knock on the door, or they can call the proper authorities. If they have contact information for the landlord, they can call the landlord. Sometimes that helps, and sometimes it doesn't. We have landlords in the city who own well over 100 properties each. Neighbors have an additional recourse with a short-term rental if it becomes a nuisance in the neighborhood. In addition to calling the authorities, they can report repeat offenders to the websites where those people advertise their properties for customers. Both VRBO and Airbnb have a process whereby they will remove the house from those websites, which will make it impossible, or at least very difficult, for that owner to find people to rent it to. The city took six months to study the issue of short-term rentals and came up with some decent rules for owners to follow, like there can only be one short-term rental for eight houses, or basically one per block. I believe now the city needs to let the process work. If there are problems with the property, with things that are within control of the owner, the neighbors can call the proper authorities, and if the issue continues, the city can levy a fine, or they can revoke their license.
You have one minute.
If they operate without a license, there should be some sort of penalty. Sorry, I didn't know, all do better is not good enough. That being said, well-managed properties owned by local people, especially those with a good track record, should be supported. So in general, I'm in favor of short-term rentals. I've stayed at short-term rentals when I've traveled with my family myself. On one memorable trip, we spent several days outside Seattle with my kids, my grandkids, even my parents, and we were all able to stay in one big house. We made meals together; we played cards around the dining room table. You can't do those things in a hotel room. Independence could be a great tourist destination, and I hope the city will focus on that more in the future. We have all the great historic sites, lots of family activities available, world-class genealogy center, not to mention the national sites like the Truman Presidential Library. When people come to Independence, they need places to stay that can accommodate different family needs and different budgets. So those are my thoughts. I hope somebody finds them helpful. Thank you.
Next up is Norma Higby, and then after Norma is Mike Talcott.
I'm Norma Higby. I live at 512 Rankin Road. I've lived there for 28 years. I'm so happy to hear that she said a lot of the things that I was going to say. So I will be more personal with the people who was trying to get the short-term rental on their property. They're a lovely young couple, Jacob Taylor and Lucy Jensen. He couldn't be here tonight because he works out of town. That was the point of this house that they purchased. They looked for a very lovely neighborhood, a beautiful home, well-kept. They have a person come every few days to mow the lawn. They were naive as to what it all took for an Airbnb. But he has done everything that is required, all the rules and regulations at this point. And like I said, he's out of town. His wife is due with their second baby any day, so they couldn't be here. I received a letter, a multi-page letter, from one of our neighbors who said a lot of untruths about this couple and about the house. They said that there was prostitution going on. There was a drug house. Those were untrue. And I feel like they besmirched the name of this lovely, really young couple. And they wanted to settle here. But in order to pay their mortgage, they thought, we'll have a short-term rental. We can pay our mortgage from that while we're out of town with his job. And then when he works in Kansas City for six months or how many months, then they would stay at that house. And so when... They tried to go door-to-door to talk to people. They came to my house twice and were just lovely. And when they went to some of the homes, especially the ones who were besmirching them, they would not open the door. They wouldn't talk to them. So this couple has dealt... They're just so upset. They feel like they're unwelcome. They're from Salt Lake City, Utah. So they come to Independence, and all of this blows up in their face when they had all good faith to make a beautiful home for themselves and for short-term, as Beth said. You know, I've stayed in an Airbnb. It's great for families. I've not had a problem at all there across the street. And I think it's great. I think we have a young couple. I almost feel like there's a discrimination against this couple because they're young. We're an older neighborhood. We've all lived there for a long time, and we're set in our ways. And here comes a young couple who's going to continue to have children, who wants to have a family. And maybe, you know, there's a little discrimination there. And then they think, well, it's going to disrupt the neighborhood having an Airbnb. But I would stay there. I have family from out of town that I think it would be great. Would I send them to most of the hotels in Kansas City or Independence? No, especially the ones on I-70. I was on... I served on the grand jury. I know what goes on in those hotels.
You have one minute.
But you have an Airbnb, beautiful home. I wanted to speak about the neighbors who have bought their houses that are next door to me. The yard is... I mean, there's no grass. It's two foot high. I know I can go and complain about them. We lost our power for 10 hours last night because there is no upkeep. I don't even know who owns that house anymore because there's so many people that have come and gone. And I know the one person couldn't sell it, so he was letting somebody else live there. Anyway, I'm just... My point is that this is a beautiful couple, trying to do the right thing, was a little naive, but the Airbnbs are a great source for people to stay at. It would... You know, as far as financially, you know that they're going to go buy groceries because there's a kitchen. They'll go to restaurants. They'll go to entertainment areas, paying taxes. Jacob and Taylor will have to pay taxes, fees. And so I think it's all good. And I do, like Beth said, hope that it's not... That you don't make your decision like the planning commission did because there was people who talked against them. And, you know, let your heart rule as to what the good thing is to do. Thank you.
Your time has expired. I'm sorry. Thank you. Next up is Mike Talcott, and then Tony Summer after that.
Good evening, Council. Mike Talcott, 1901 South Lake Drive. Golden Acres is a historic neighborhood developed in 1931, the first planned subdivision in Independence. According to the city's own website, we're known for its longevity of homeownership. That statement does not do it justice. We currently have multiple families that have multiple generations living in two and three different homes within the subdivision. In other words, grandparents living down the street from the children and across the street from their grandchildren. Even my kid's great-great-grandparents live two doors up the street from me. That home was passed down to their great-grandparents. My daughter even lived across the street from me for many years until she moved to the country. Homes are passed down from generation to generation, and those generations often choose to stay in the neighborhood. This unique, quiet neighborhood is one of Independence' best-kept secrets. We hold holiday events, parades, pancake breakfasts, and ice cream socials. We clear each other's snow-covered driveways. We all know each other and look out for each other. Neighbors delivered food to sick neighbors' doorsteps during the pandemic. Our kids and grandkids play on quiet, winding streets with little traffic. We all know each other's dogs and greet them on our daily walks. This is not the place for a short-term rental business, especially one that advertises it can accommodate large groups. When someone decides to open up a business, which an Airbnb or short-term rental is, especially when that business will be plopped down in the middle of a residential neighborhood, common sense says you better first make sure it's legal to do so. And secondly, common sense says that you should better make sure that all ordinances and regulations are followed in order to open that business. Neither of these things were done in this case. The fact that this property was initially being run as an illegal, short-term rental business does not give us confidence it will be managed properly in the future. The claim that Airbnbs are safe by screening and rating their customers provides a false sense of security. A 2021 in-depth Bloomberg report outlined how the company spends millions of dollars to make nightmares go away. Their safety team, referred to as the Black Box, spend their time making sure negative incidents, including sexual assault, rape, human trafficking, assaults, and murders, don't hit the news media, and make payouts to victims to the tune of $50 million annually. No one can honestly make the claim that short-term rental businesses are not detrimental to the neighborhoods because companies like Airbnb secrecy make it difficult for academics and police departments to accurately gather data. Though they have tried to curtail the party house problem, in recent years, we've seen where it did not prevent a shooting resulting in death in Overland Park at 145th and Knox just last year. As this particular listing in Golden Acres was advertised for large groups, this is concerning for this quiet neighborhood. With the World Cup event approaching, the concern is magnified. These groups are not the same type of people visiting Independence to go to the Truman Library or attend a family reunion. They're here to party. There are plenty of places where short-term rental businesses make sense in Independence, but the middle of a quiet, tight-knit, historic neighborhood is not the appropriate place. According to the Short-Term Rental Ordinance, if I am interpreting it correctly, approving this business could potentially open the door to as many as 23 possible Airbnbs within Golden Acres. Bringing in a short-term rental business will destroy the integrity and character of this neighborhood. The goal is to have stronger, safer neighborhoods like Golden Acres, but allowing these businesses in makes this goal more difficult. There are many studies that have found that short-term rentals damage the sense of community and poke holes in the social fabric of the neighborhood.
You have one minute.
Which over time leads to increased crime. I'm speaking tonight, trying to protect the future of this neighborhood for the applicant and his family, as well as for the rest of my neighbors. We have planning and zoning for a reason, to protect neighborhoods and place businesses where they make sense. More than one planning commissioner even went as far as to recommend this applicant not pursue this short-term rental further by bringing it to the City Council at this time, but he did anyway. Please follow the unanimous decision of the planning commission and vote no on Resolution 23744. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Summer, and then Ms. Phillips will be after Mr. Summer.
All right. Thank you. My name's Tony Summer, 220 West Mill Street. I came here tonight to give a little context to something the city manager said about the bus system last week during the budget presentation. He said the bus system costs $8 per rider, an amount that is absolutely outrageous. For comparison, the Ride KC Route 24 costs a mere $1.25 per rider. The reason for this difference is pretty obvious. These routes almost certainly cost roughly the same to run per hour, so the difference has to be due to differences in ridership. And indeed, the Indy Bus System averages 15,400 riders per month. The 24 Route, one route by itself, had 76,000 riders in March, five times the number of the entire Indy Bus System, despite only having twice the number of bus hours. But the conclusion that some may come to, that our bus system doesn't have enough demand to justify the cost, is wrong. And that's not just my opinion, it's an objective fact. Our system has low ridership because we have made the active decision to design our system in a way that produces low ridership. This isn't necessarily a bad thing. Every public transit system has to balance two competing goals, maximizing ridership and maximizing coverage. A city is naturally going to have areas that are more conductive to transit. These are areas with high population densities and more shops and restaurants that people want to go to. And the city will have areas that are less conductive to transit. These are areas with lower densities and fewer no businesses. A system that wants to maximize ridership focuses their limited resources on routes that cover the more productive areas. A system that wants to maximize coverage will run routes that cover a large area, sacrificing frequency in high-demand areas to ensure people in low-demand areas still have coverage. Our system maximizes coverage. If you look at our routes, a trip that would only take 10 to 15 minutes by car takes two to three times as long on the bus. For example, the purple route that goes right from the transit center that's right out here, goes down Nolan to the Hy-Vee on 40 Highway, a trip that takes 10 minutes by car takes half an hour by bus. This is in large part because the bus doesn't go straight down Nolan Road like a car would. It goes in and out of side streets to increase coverage. This context is very important when talking about the costs because higher cost per rider is a choice we have actively made. We could increase ridership easily by cutting lower-demand routes, simplifying high-demand routes, and using all of our resources on the new high-demand routes that would make them fast and convenient to use. However, it would sacrifice the near-door-to-door coverage that the current system provides. On top of this, I would like to highlight how little we truly spend on the bus system. Even at $3 million per year, that comes out to just $2 per month per resident. That is less than the cost of a single gallon of gas. In my opinion, this increase in cost the city manager has highlighted is missing the point. Our bus system is so underfunded that it is all but unusable. And if you disagree, I challenge you to go just one month without using your car and only relying on the bus system. And the proposal for an on-demand system is not a real option. These systems naturally have very low capacity and will only further shrink our ridership and increase the cost per rider. If you think our $8 per rider now is outrageous, just wait until it's $26 per rider like in Raytown where they've implemented this system. There are only two real options. One is to find a way to fund it, whether by making cuts elsewhere or having a special tax to support it like we have for other things. The other option is to give up, admit that we are unwilling to do what's necessary to have a real public transit system, and conceding that only those who are physically, mentally, and financially capable of driving a car are going to be allowed to be able to live in Independence. For me, I say we go with the first option. Thank you.
Thank you. Next is Ms. Phillips, and then Debbie Skaggs will be next.
Do not bend.
It's just right at the very, very top.
Okay. I don't want to mess it up.
If you bend it, like, there you go.
All right. Cool. Thank you. My name is Lee Phillips. I live at 1423 South Maywood Avenue. Mr. Mayor, Honored Council, I rise tonight unpretentiously, along with my affected neighbors, to make a statement of exception regarding the approval of the short-term rental permit for the property located at 1430 South Maywood Avenue. First, we would like to clarify our position of exception. We are not, nor have we ever been, opposed to the 30-day minimum rental of the property. Where we take exception is the rotating door of a short-term permit, which could amount to a conservative estimate of 15 different rentals in a single 30-day period. Let's do the math. The current 30-day minimum rental of the property allows 12 different rentals in a one-year period. In stark contrast, a short-term rental permit, using a conservative estimate, could result in 180 different rentals in that same one-year period and a possible increase in traffic of 2,100%. The actual results could be considerably higher. Our second valid and legal protest confirms that we take great exception to a short-term rental permit for the property, and the applicant has stated that they will be renting it for 30 days minimum, no matter the outcome. There are safe and viable fallback income options for the applicant, either continuing the 30-day minimum rental or long-term rental of the property. A denial of the short-term rental permit allows the affected homeowners the peace of mind that no more than 12 different rentals will be allowed in a one-year period. We take exception to 180 different rentals in that same one-year period, and that is the sole purpose of a short-term rental permit. We have tried to seek resolution. At the desk, we have provided copies of this speech and an email thread for your consideration. We, in agreement with the planning commission, suggested the applicant not continue to seek short-term rental of the property, but our suggestion was refused. Tonight, we want to publicly thank the planning commission for unanimous six-to-zero no vote on recommending approval at the meeting on April 11th, 2023. Thank you, commissioners, for listening to your citizen homeowners and upholding our second valid and legal protest. Why did the planning commission vote no unanimously? We will share the transcript of Commissioner Preston's opening statement in full. For the record, Commissioner Preston, no relation to the applicant, is the vice chair of the planning commission. He said, quote, "Madam Chair, I have been an incredible advocate, and I might even say for short-term rentals. I find that in appropriate cases, they have been a positive impact on neighborhoods. Where I have not supported short-term rentals is where the neighbors take exception, and I've been consistent about that. I honestly believe this would have a positive impact, but that's irrelevant what I think. The neighbors have the right to the psychological comfort of what they perceive as appropriate in their neighborhood. It breaks my heart, but I can't support this application because it would be inconsistent with the protocol, as I've established in my own mind, as to the quiet comfort that every resident is entitled to in their neighborhood." He continues with, "It doesn't matter what I think. It doesn't matter what the applicant thinks. The only thing that really matters when it comes to a neighborhood is what the people in that neighborhood find to be comforting and consistent with what they think brings them peace, the quiet enjoyment of their home, which extends to their neighborhood. Doesn't matter what I feel. Doesn't matter what I think will be the impact. The only thing that matters is what the people in that neighborhood think." Commissioner Preston finishes by saying, "I hope that this applicant will take the high ground and make use of the long-term rental for the sake of the psychological comfort of the people in that neighborhood. I may be wrong in my thinking, but I can't support the application," end quote. Commissioner Nesbit's comments were, quote, "I agree with what Preston is saying. I feel that we don't live there. The neighbors live there. So I mean, I wouldn't like it right next to my house like they're saying, so that's the way I feel also," end quote. Later in the discussion, Commissioner Preston said, quote, "I would be totally uncomfortable saying no to this application if there were no other financial means for this property, but there's a safe fallback position," end quote. Mr. Mayor and distinguished council members, in conclusion, I will repeat my opening statement. We are not, nor have we ever been, opposed to the 30-day minimum rental of the property. The affected neighbors would prefer that this property be restricted to a 30-day minimum rental, and again, we ask that the short-term rental permit be denied. We received a six-to-zero no vote from the planning commission. The affected homeowners have legally protested twice, and we have offered a compromise that would be... would benefit the applicant, the affected homeowners, and the neighborhood as a whole. The applicant has refused our attempts to come to an amicable resolution. We ask this honored and thoughtful council to hear its citizen homeowners and deny the short-term rental for the property. It is our hope and prayer tonight that this council, like the planning commission, will uphold our valid and legal protest in Resolution 23-743. We ask for your no vote on the appeal for a short-term rental permit. We are optimistic that your decision will be one that is both ethical and of good repute. Thank you kindly for your valuable time.
Thank you. Debbie Skaggs is next, and then R.D. Brackenberry.
Mayor, Council, thank you very much for your time. I'm sure, oh, Debbie Skaggs, 12013 Henry Street, Sugar Creek, Missouri, 64054. I'm sure many are wondering why a Sugar Creek resident is asking to speak. It is because I am immersed in this community in multiple ways that matter, plus half of my street is Independence. I'm here tonight to talk about the danger and victims of pit bull-type dogs. In 2006, Independence made a decision to put the safety of its residents and visitors above the breed of an animal, a breed that, according to the CDC and other sources, inflicts 67% of severe injuries or deaths compared to other breeds combined. Now there is a small group of people who, despite having the ban in place, decided they wanted to thumb their nose at the city and bring pit bull-type dogs into Independence, and then want to cry to lift the ban because there are so many and enforcement they claim is an issue. That same small group of people expect you to overturn the ban because they chose to ignore it. When Independence held its town hall at the Water Department in 2019 to discuss the ban, there were recent victims there who tried to share their story. Instead, they were met with ridicule, disbelief, and sadly, revictimized. Thankfully, the city chose the safety, and the ban stayed in place. We talked about length of stay in our shelter. If you get on the internet, you can find hundreds of this breed stuck in shelters, rescues, and fosters across the U.S. that has nothing to do with BSL and everything to do with the dangers of owning one. It is obvious this breed has been way overbred to the point they surpassed the number of owners brave enough to take one. I keep hearing it's all in how they're raised. Let me ask you this: if that is true, how does this breed keep getting into the hands of so many people that incorrectly raise them? Why don't other breeds have the same issue at such an alarming rate? Megan Karns, a pet advocate, puts it this way, and I quote, "If we want to save pit bulls, we have to get honest about genetics. We have to be completely upfront in saying serious dog aggression is a risk you run in this breed," end quote. I say, if they require so much training, education, and caveats in owning them, chances are they're not a good family pet or a community pet, for that matter. If we want to talk about neighboring cities, let's talk about Excelsior Springs, who lifted their ban in August of 2022, and in October, an Amazon driver was killed by pit bulls. Let's talk about KC, who has mandatory sterilization of all pit bulls, yet a city employee and two volunteers were just recently mauled and sent to the hospital by pit bulls, one of whom was pregnant. Both incidents were unprovoked, which is a theme that surrounds this breed. The owners of this breed, time and again, fail to control or contain them. We would be naive to believe there is nothing going on in Independence. At least 18 appellate courts across the United States have recognized the dangerousness of pit bulls. Both state appellate and federal courts consistently uphold the constitutionality of BSL. There are many cities across Missouri who have BSL. BSL doesn't work where jurisdictions fail to enforce it. Does that mean you throw up your hands and cave in to those who choose to ignore the rules? There will always be people who don't feel they need to follow laws or ordinances. That's why we have entities like police and animal control. I get all dogs have the potential to bite. There is a huge difference between a Level 1 to 3 bite that most breeds inflict upon a victim over a Level 4 disfiguring or death that the pit bull types can inflict. I will concede, there could be some owners of this breed who are lucky enough not to have an incident or take every precaution to avoid someone getting hurt. However, there are not enough of those within that breed to provide a high level of comfort.
You have one minute.
I don't care to play Russian roulette with a breed that the odds are not in our favor. The dangerous dog ordinance is, in fact, a reactive measure whereby someone must get hurt or worse for that to kick in. The ban is being proactive. Doing away with the ban is going to exacerbate an already problematic situation. Please keep the ban in place or allow the voters to choose. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Brackenberry, and please state your name and address, please. And, Mr. Brackenberry, you've spoken on this topic before, so you have two minutes, please.
Pardon?
You've spoken on this topic before, so you have two minutes, please.
Okay.
Thank you.
Yeah, my name's Bob Brackenberry. My address is 400 North Cogan Lane, Independence, Missouri, and I thank you all for letting me speak tonight. I've already addressed this issue. I quoted statistics and cited facts, and here I am again. And I'm not going to bore you with the facts tonight. I'm here. I think you should do what your conscience and stick take. Maybe this effort to protect the public is a step too far. It's a question of personal liberty versus public safety. What's more important? Do we allow people to keep this breed, knowing that attacks, injuries, and maybe deaths will result? Is this liberty worth that risk? All I know is some of us will have to live with the results. Why were pit bulls banned back in 2006? Was there a profit motive? Was it a group power trip? What's changed?
You have one minute.
I guess a good way to find out is go ahead and lift it. Those who ignore the past are doomed to repeat it. What's the hurry? Put it on the next ballot and let the voters decide.
Thank you. Next up is Terry Kelly Tweedy. And you have two minutes, please.
I wore heels this time. My name is Terry Kelly Tweedy. I live at 3111 South Arrowhead Drive, Independence, Missouri. And I'm going to speak tonight on behalf of the victims of the pit bull dog attacks. The hundreds of adults and children who have lost their lives or have to live with the mutilated scars of their faces or missing limbs. Not to mention the horror that animals have to go through if they go into the fighting ring. Something we can't ignore does exist. We cannot pretend that there's no problem with pit bull dogs. Maybe we've been lucky in Independence, but if you don't look at what's going on through the rest of the country, we really do have a problem of being blinded. This ban was put in place years ago. I'm sorry, I am really so distressed. I just want to say, in a perfect world, every dog owner would follow the rules and show concern for their neighbors and their children's safety. In a perfect world, we wouldn't have parents who would not lock their children or pets in a hot car. But this is why we have laws. And to just say, "Politics be damned," which I've heard from the other side, is a really poor excuse for letting the voters decide what is safe for them. We want to be safe, and if we're not going to be safe by lifting this ban, then we should have a vote and that say. Thank you.
Thank you. Next up is April Preston, and then Cynthia Green.
April Preston, 10920 East Winter Road.
You might want to speak into it a little closer or see if you can speak up just a tad.
How's that?
That help?
Better?
Okay, thank you.
Yes. I have spoken on this before, so. I'm here for 1430 South Maywood. I am an owner of that property with my partner Jeff that I brought today, and I just wanted to ask the neighborhood if they would give me a chance. And I know that these permits are only for one year at a time, and they can be revoked if I break the rules or if I make anyone upset or angry or do something wrong. I have a good track record. I was here in 2020 during COVID on Zoom, and we passed 1734 South Northern, which is right in Inglewood. It's not far at all from the Maywood property that I have. It has an amazing track record. I have 1,000 5-star reviews. The neighbors all wave and congratulate me in the streets when they see me. They have used the property for their own family, which I would absolutely invite the neighbors of Maywood to do. And just for the record also, the average stay at Maywood, I'm sorry, at Stonehouse, which is what we call the Northern Property, is 11 days. So that is the average stay. People don't just pop in for a night or two. They're here for family, weddings, reunions. We had people in there for church conference, all of those things. That's probably all my time, but just give us an opportunity. They all have my cell phone number. If anything goes wrong, call me. I'll fix it. I promise.
Thank you. Next up is Cynthia Green. And Cynthia, please state your name and address, please.
My name is Cynthia Green. I live at 105 South Maywood Avenue, and I'm up here today to speak about the property on Maywood of April Preston's. Our neighborhood has done everything in the law and the city that has provided for us to protest, and our fellow neighborhood of neighbors are not willing to accept this as a short-term rental. The 30-day, the 60-day, the one-year, welcome, we're happy to have that, we don't have a problem with it. But we do have the problems of the goings and ending out of people multiple times. She could say that 11 days at the most or whatever, it doesn't matter. Eventually, once it gets established, then things will be lowered, and it will be every other day a new person. It could be multiple people coming and going. We have no control over that. Our neighborhood has no control of that. We only have our own voices, our own protests, which we have done twice now, saying we are not comfortable with this. And I think things have been done very backwards on this for the state of Missouri. I think they should apply and see if this place could be negotiated to become a place there that would be accepting of an Airbnb instead of the community, the neighbors, having to be the people that are trying to sabotage them. And we're not trying to sabotage anybody, but we are a neighborhood. I look after my 90-year-old lady that lives next door. I had also a neighbor down, two houses down from me, I helped until his death. I have a neighbor that lives across the street from me, whose wife has had a stroke, and he is alone and taking care of her. What is that house going to do for our neighborhood? What is it providing? And are they on the watch also for the streetwalkers that we have? We have stayed up many nights on our porch confronting these streetwalkers and letting them know they're not wanted here. And so we have made this area safer and a good place to have a home. And April is welcome to have a home there. Have it for a year, six months, 30 days. She's not being discriminated against on that. We want to be careful, we want to be comfortable within our own home and in who's dwelling in our area and who we need to watch out for. This puts us at a disadvantage. April doesn't call us and let us know, well, Tom James is going to be here this week, and then Susan Becky is going to be here next week. You know, that doesn't exist. We need to have them apply and confront the neighborhood in advance and say, is this a good place for me to buy a house to open up an Airbnb? I know they're welcoming in other communities and other areas, and she already has one or two, plus her own home. And a lot of these Airbnbs, the people are living close to that, next door, underneath it, above it, but there's nobody living in that other than a renter up above it. And then she has a dual property, and it's not that she's not going to make money. She's going to make money one way or another, and she can also sell that house at a profit, which I don't recommend. I just recommend she go ahead and have what she wants other than an Airbnb.
You have one minute.
And my whole neighborhood feels the same way about that. And so I really wish and pray that you will listen to the citizens that are saying, no, thank you. Thank you.
Thank you. Next up is Karen Davis, and then Jeff Marland is after Karen.
Hello, my name is Corinne Davis. I am a resident at 119 West C. I feel tall. I have worked for April for several years now. To kind of give you a scope of why I think I know what I know, I had a construction business with my first husband, and then I became a firefighter EMT for the city of Lincoln, Nebraska for several years, in which I had public education programs and a lot of structural information classes that I took, a lot of things that I think pertain to this particular situation. I also have been a resident of Independence, Missouri since 2010. I brought my family here to go to Maywood Baptist Church, which is very close to the Maywood House. I'm very involved in the city. I have been for a long time. My mother sat on the Historic Commission for quite a while. I am in support of this Airbnb. I actually worked in it basically when she first bought it. It was like a time capsule, and I dealt with unpacking what would stay and go, and we had a kind of a cute little dream of what this was going to be, and I spent time in the neighborhood immensely. I was in the yard all the time. I was at the house all the time. And I've worked for April for other properties, too. I do a lot of bid work for her husband, looking at properties and telling them what they need to have done. And I worked very hard at the Maywood House to make sure that it was a safe place and that the neighbors were happy, honestly. If I found something that was strange or they had something to talk about, I went right to her, and we dealt with it in a, I would say, a very responsible, reasonable manner. I also know that I see how she does business with her other properties. It is something that I would get behind, and that's saying a lot for me to put my name on that. And I've stayed at Airbnbs in Colorado before. I think it's something that we all are going to have in our city on some level, and I personally believe that April would be a good person to do that with. She cares very much, and she gets on top of any issues. I've been very impressed with her as a property manager. I feel very strongly for the city of Independence. I love this city, and I have worked hard for my family for this to be a good place to be. And I don't see this particular case as being a problem. I have a, I live at the corner of C and Washington, and there is a short-term rental across from me on Washington, a very large home that was empty for a long time. And then a few years ago, they started short-term renting it, and I didn't mind it. It was children's laughter or families getting together. I actually got to see the inside of the house because it was that way, and I have never had one issue. Now, it quit being that. I don't know why, because I don't talk to the owners. And it became kind of a more long-term rental, and I have had less pleasing things from that than I did before. So, like, in my neighborhood, that I care very much about my children play on my street, you know. I don't see it as being a you know, um, I don't see it as being a problem. My opinion is, is that she does a very good job of being respectful and safe. I, I, I think that the idea of it being, um, a party house is pretty rare. I'm not going to say it's not going to happen, but I, I see people having enough money to spend there, they're going to probably respect it.
You have one minute.
I want to say thank you for your time and that's all.
Thank you very much. Appreciate it. Uh, next up is Jeff Marland and then it'd be Jason White. And Jason, if I could ask you to queue up, I'd be grateful. Please state your name and address, please.
My name is Jeff Marland. I live at 7314 West 80th Street in Overland Park, Kansas. Uh, I'm the money guy. I'm April's partner. Uh, we've been working together for 14 years. Uh, I office with her down on Winter Road at Royal Oaks Realty and we have a group called Royal Oaks Investment Group. And, uh, we've quietly invested four and a half million dollars, in four and a half million dollars worth of properties, uh, in Independence, some apartment complexes, some, uh, duplexes and so forth. We've increased their value and, uh, we've sold them. We haven't flipped them. We held them for a couple, three years and sold them to responsible owners. Um, you know, I wasn't really in support of this house being an Airbnb at the beginning and, uh, but I believe in April, uh, she's super conscientious. Uh, the other house we own on Northern has done really good. Um, financially, it's a little better than, you know, there's no windfall in this Airbnb. It's a lot of work. It's a lot of liability. Um, I'm personal signature on the loan. We've got over a hundred thousand dollars in cash invested in this project. Uh, we were kind of relying on the experience that we had with Northern. We had a lot of neighbor pushback on Northern as well, which we overcame. Uh, the council said, we'll give you a temporary permit because we can always revoke it. And again, I've got the most to lose and April's got her money in it too. And we, but it's not about the money. Uh, this house was special, three generations, newest house on the block, biggest lot on the block. We got more money invested on that street than anybody else almost. Um, we're not trying to do multiple Airbnbs. We're not trying to change the complexion of the neighborhood. It's just neat the way they did it with kind of restoring the house in its original condition, utilizing the furnishings, the, the game room, the whole nine yards and kind of, uh, kind of a time capsule into, uh, this, this, this area and this neighborhood. Um, I'm super responsive. I'm super accessible. I've got the most to lose if we put a bad tenant in there, whether it's Airbnb or whatever. Uh, anybody who tears it up, um, she's got nothing but five-star ratings on, on Independence. You know, we get stuff, stuff breaks every once in a while, but it's, it hasn't been, it hasn't been a, a big, uh, you know, problem. Um, it's a family-oriented house. And again, if the neighbors, I respect the neighbors' fears, I respect the neighbors' concerns. I'm the father of three daughters. I'm overprotective. I, you know, I'm a neighbor guy. If the neighbors come to us and say, you know, this is not working out, uh, you're getting some rowdies in there, then, you know, I don't want the liability. I don't want the hassle. I mean, my group is family-oriented, it's small. We've got investments in Topeka, Austin, Texas, Lee's Summit. Uh, we came to Independence, April and I, she came from here. I love the hometown feel. I love the potential of it. It's a, a great resource for Kansas City metro area that, that's being discovered. We want to be part of that and we're spending our money accordingly. We're not rich people, we're not big guys, we're not from New York. I mean, there's five other houses on that street that are owned by LLCs. I don't know anything about them. Um, I didn't think that the Airbnb was right, but I think she's got an opportunity to pull it off, to be a good resource. And if it doesn't, then we'll, we'll, we'll get out, we'll do something else with it. It's not about the money. And it's not about being disruptive, it's not about being not a towner. I mean, we, we've got real roots here financially and physically where we work. So I would ask that you affirm our request for short-term rental permit and give us a chance to do it. Thanks.
Thank you. And Jason, come on forward and you've got two minutes. You've spoken on this topic before.
Thank you, Jason White, 1024 South Forest. I'm so very sorry there are people afraid in my community. Uh, the reality is, um, you can't go to Lee Summit, can't go to Blue Springs, can't go to Kansas City, Kansas, because they repealed the pit bull ban. Don't go to Overland Park. By the way, don't go to Sugar Creek either, where the speaker lives, because their city council repealed the pit bull ban. Why did they do that? It isn't because of a small group of people, actually over a hundred here in Independence. It's because of the weight of evidence provided by the Humane Society, the ASPCA, mainstream national animal welfare groups speaking nationally. It's on behalf of the National Animal Control Association policy statement. Think about the American Veterinary Medical Association. The mainstream animal groups have all acknowledged it's unenforceable, it doesn't make sense, study and work and have a good, effective, dangerous dog ordinance.
You have one minute.
The last thing to say is keep it accurate. Excelsior Springs repealed their ban. There was a tragedy up there. The tragedy was a German Shepherd and a Mastiff. How does fear continue in a community? It continues when people keep breeding the fear and feeding the fire. Accurate information, Humane Society, ASPCA, the Veterinary National Group, National Animal Control Group, rely on those folks who have been studying this issue for decades and the conclusions they've reached. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. White. Um, if I can indulge the body and the members in the auditorium, could we take a five-minute break? Could that be possible? Since we have about an hour worth of comments, so if we're gonna be good on that, we'll take a five-minute break. I've got 6:59, come back at six, or excuse me, 7:04. And come on back. All right, that brings us to, to restart this meeting, it brings us to the consent agenda.
Mr. Mayor.
Uh, please proceed.
I, I would move to approve the reports and recommendations of the city manager.
We have a motion to approve the reports and recommendations of the city manager. Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a motion in a second. Uh, do any members wish to poll any of the items for separate consideration?
Mr. Mayor.
Please proceed.
Can you please pull item 23-741?
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Mayor.
Please proceed.
If we could, please pull 23-744.
Okay, anyone else? Any other items? So we've got 23741 and then 23744. Anything else? All right. Uh, 23741, council member, uh, I'll hand you the floor. Please proceed.
Nope, we need to vote.
Oh, please forgive me. I need to vote on the consent agenda and then we'll come to you, council member.
Wait a minute. Where's Councilmember Perkins? And Fears. We're missing two council members.
Shall we wait just a second then?
We should.
Should we send out a search party? Chief, do you, can you have a search party made for these kinds of occasions?
They're always ready.
Jason, do me a favor, just look down that hallway and see if you see a council member and we really are going to send out a search party.
Can we send the officers that are equipped with tasers?
We're not going to taze a council member for being late. Unless we had a super majority of five members saying, go ahead and taze them, right? Then we could do that. No, no citizens, no. We're not, not, no, not going there. No, 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 no. All right. Now that we, hopefully, let me gain control. All right, we're back in. Thank you. Yep. Do you have any items to poll on the consent agenda? All right. Uh, we have two items that have been polled, we'll take the vote, so, uh, Madam City Clerk, please call the roll for the consent agenda.
Councilmembers Fears?
Yes.
Perkins?
Yes.
Stewart?
Yes.
McCandless?
Yes.
Steinmeier?
Yes.
Hobart?
Yes.
Mayor Rowland?
Yes. We have seven zero in favor of the consent agenda. Uh, the first item that was polled was 23741. Councilmember, please proceed.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Uh, this resolution is regard to the extension of the terms for the mayor advisory commission. I just want to make a motion to amend one line in this. At the very end, I would like to, uh, amend, if an ordinance has not been adopted by the city council, the terms of the members shall end on 12/21/2023.
Okay. Anything else, council member, or any discussion?
That'll be it, thank you.
Okay. Anyone else, other discussions on this? Oh, I need a second.
Second.
Okay, we've got a motion in a second, any discussion?
Um, I, I also requested to have an amendment. I don't know where we're going to fit that in.
Okay.
Just changing, not changing the line, but the date to August 15, 2023.
Well, we've got one motion on the floor, so we've got to deal with that motion first, council member, and then we could go to your motion.
That's fine.
Um, we've got a motion in a second with regards to December 31st being the deadline. Anyone else? Any further discussion? Uh, Madam City Clerk, please call the roll.
Councilmembers Fears?
Yes.
Perkins?
Yes.
Stewart?
Yes.
McCandless?
Yes.
Steinmeier?
No.
Hobart?
Yes.
Mayor Rowland?
Uh, yes, and this, the amendment just presented, making the deadline for 12/31/23, uh, to make the members of the committee, uh, they would basically, their term would be termed at that point. Uh, very good. Any further discussion on this resolution? Please proceed.
I, I would like to amend what was just approved to read, uh, the same way, but the date being changed to August 15, which would give them a full year, which we were told would only take, um, well, we'll get a second on that. So I just let, to move to amend the date.
Okay, so there's another motion to amend the date to August 15th. Any, is there a second?
Second.
There's a motion in a second to amend it to August 15th. Um, I will state this, I was in favor of Councilmember Stewart's, uh, resolution on this. Uh, he called me ahead of time and we discussed it. Um, I was not aware there were going to be any other suggestions for doing this, so I would like to stick with, uh, the December 31st date, but that is my preference. Any other discussions on this matter? Please proceed.
Um, I know that this group is coming to the end of their work and they should be presenting a document to the city council for consideration within the next month. Um, so allowing them three extra months to conclude whatever corrections, et cetera, makes sense. Do you anticipate there is other work that will need to be addressed that would require extension to the end of the year?
Um, my concern is that if we don't act and they're not a committee, we can't go back to them and say, hey, what are your thoughts on these changes? Um, they have literally spent hundreds of hours on this process with all of them together. They've met almost every Friday, uh, right across the hall here, uh, typically at 8:30 in the morning and have just spent a tremendous amount of time on this issue. Uh, I'm incredibly proud of their work, however, it's very complicated. Um, we've had a pretty hearty discussion about a simple amendment with one line. Uh, they have roughly about 30-some pages of information. It will be the most comprehensive ethics reform that this city has ever seen with regards to elected officials. It'll be very, very serious matter and, uh, it will require a tremendous amount of time and effort and energy. If this body in fact says, we have concerns with this, I mean, we certainly can change that, but I would like to have their opinion or their, their thought process on it. Not that they, we have to have it, but that's my thoughts. But I would certainly... But I would certainly defer to, uh, the body, but I will be voting no on this amendment. Anyone else?
Mr. Mayor.
Please proceed.
I was against the last extension. We, we, we started this in July of last year, and we were told that we should be able to get all these, uh, folks in the group, uh, and as of August fifteenth last year, we, we made, uh, you, appointed the seven members to the commission, um, and then we were told that they should be able to get this handled by the end of March, uh, to which we extended to Mar- to May thirty-first, we've only seen, I have, I, I still don't have the, the updated thirty pages, so I haven't seen those. Um, I'd like to see what, what is going on, 'cause when it comes to the ethics, no one up here is gonna argue that ethics in politics is absolutely necessary, but how we go about doing this, I think we all need to weigh in. It, ethics should have about eight or nine, eleven max, uh, essentials to, to how we conduct ourselves with honesty, integrity, accountability, transparency, all these things. And, and I would like to see the progress that they're being made. Now, my understanding is they've been reading from the old charter, and we're getting, we have a charter review that's gonna be, uh, having someone come from there, I think, from this committee to, to discuss it. I have no problem with all of that, I would just, I don't, I'd like to get us to that place where we don't just continue to extend it out, extend it out, extend it out. I think August fifteenth, a full year, uh, is giving them more than enough time from what we've originally said, and just to keep going out, um, is not fair to the people we represent, it's not fair to the council. We need to have the ability to weigh in, and if we're going to have a new charter, I'll just be honest, I think that it should be, any ethics reform should be enshrined in that charter, and the people decide if we wanna change ethical standards, how they want us to be held to, whatever level of integrity, accountability, honesty, all of those things. So, I, I think August fifteenth gives them plenty of time to do so. Let the, the charter review committee have a look at it, bring it back to us, let's, let's start this discussion, but just to keep moving it down the road makes no sense to me. That's why I think a year is acceptable.
Thank you. Please proceed.
Having listened to both reasons, um, I think some of the pressure is actually on this body of electeds to be thoughtful, to read, to make suggestions, to make decisions, so that we can be in concert with this ethics committee, make the decisions. Um, it can't be an indefinite undertaking, so part of the responsibility returns to us to move things along. Um, and so I am comfortable with an August fifteenth date, thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else have other further discussion? Seeing no further discussion, Madam City Clerk, please call the roll on this amendment.
Councilmembers Fears?
No.
Perkins?
No.
Stewart?
No.
McCandless?
Yes.
Steinmeier?
Yes.
Hobart?
Yes.
Mayor Rowland?
No. This amendment fails. Okay, brings us back to item twenty-three, seven-four-four. Councilmember, I'll grant you the floor.
Oh, no.
Oh, uh, that's right, we've got another motion to approve the resolution as it was, please forgive me. Uh, any further discussion on the resolution as it was presented? Seeing no other further discussion, Madam City Clerk, please call the roll on twenty-three, seven-four-one.
We need a motion for approval of the item as amended.
Yep. Can you give me a motion?
Yes, I'll make a motion to a second.
We got it. All right, Madam City Clerk, please call the roll.
Councilmembers Fears?
Yes.
Perkins?
Yes.
Stewart?
Yes.
McCandless?
Yes.
Steinmeier?
No.
Hobart?
Yes.
Mayor Rowland?
Yes, and this item passes six in favor, one opposed. That brings us to twenty-three, seven-four-four. Councilmember, uh, you pulled it, so go ahead and, and you've got the floor.
I move to approve, um, resolution two-three-seven-four-four. Second.
There's a motion in a second to approve twenty-three, seven-four-four. Uh, any further discussion? Please proceed.
I know that, um, we as council members have received a number of, uh, emails concerning the short-term rental, uh, at Rankin Road. I also got a number of phone calls from community members in Golden Acres, uh, talking about how, um, important sense of community is to this neighborhood, and so for that reason, I will be voting no.
Okay. Thank you. Anyone else? Please proceed.
I'd address city manager.
Sure.
Mr. City Manager. Could you review the, you know, we went through a process last fall of creating a new ordinance for short-term rentals, and in there, if I'm, unless I'm incorrect, there's a process for, um, you know, complaints or dealing with, you know, withdrawing their license, things of that nature. Um, could you review that for us and just give me a?
Would be happy to. So yes, uh, as Councilmember Fears is alluding to, it was only about ninety days ago, just this past February, that the council adopted a new, uh, set of guidelines, uh, city code actually, more than guidelines or restrictions on short-term rentals, uh, in, in our city code. That defines a short-term rental as a property that is rented out for, uh, at least one night and no more than, uh, thirty days, uh, in exchange for a fee. So, uh, a lodging establishment, businesses that are operating in the city. Uh, you have to come get a business license, just like any other hotelier or bed and breakfast from the city. Uh, there were certain restrictions on the number of people that can stay in the home during that given period. There were also restrictions on how many short-term rentals can operate within an area, so, uh, there could be no more than one per eight houses on a block, so street-facing. Uh, can also not have, uh, more than five owned by any single operator within the city. Um, I think the other, uh, important caveat that should be, uh, referenced is you cannot have more than one within five hundred feet of another short-term rental in an area, so the council was very careful to make sure that density, that these weren't concentrated in one area, but rather had some spacing, uh, so we don't, you know, really create like a I-seventy corridor of hotels within a residential neighborhood. Um, getting these licensed, um, you, you have to make an application to the city. Um, if a legal protest is filed, which was defined as twenty-five percent of the landowners who are within a hundred and eighty-five feet of the, the property, uh, that is when the planning commission's evaluation only becomes as a recommending body, and then would bring it forward to the council, which is why uh, the one was before the council, uh, this evening. Um, as far as the restrictions on that go, council member, um, we as a city can revoke the licenses for a short-term rental if certain, um, thresholds are not met. So if a property owner has two or more violations of city code within a, um, three-month period, if they aren't paying all of their requisite taxes, so the transient guest tax, any sales tax, and/or property tax that's owed on that property, or if in the determination of the city there is an immediate threat to public health or public safety, uh, revocation of that license, uh, can, can occur. So, we've got the regulations on how many, we've got the regulations on how these can operate, and then we have standards in place about if these aren't good actors, revocation of those licenses to operate as a short-term rental.
Okay, so, you know, my, my thinking regarding this is, you know, we went through a very thoughtful process to develop this ordinance on short-term rentals. Um, we, uh, you know, we thoughtfully created restrictions and developed a plan for addressing the problems that occur. Um, you know, my perspective is that the code will address the issues if they arise, and, um, citizens can make complaints if there are problems. Um, my feeling is, is we have to trust the process we put in place, and I'll be voting for this.
Anyone else other further discussion? Seeing no further discussion, uh, Madam City Clerk, please call the roll.
Councilmembers Fears?
Yes.
Perkins?
No.
Stewart?
No.
McCandless?
No.
Steinmeier?
No.
Hobart?
No.
Mayor Rowland?
Yes. And the motion fails, uh, five opposed, two in favor. Uh, very good, that brings us then to our public hearings, and this will be our first public hearing.
A public hearing for the application by Christopher Carter requesting a rezoning from C-one Neighborhood Commercial to R-six, Single Family Residential, for the property located at one-zero-one-zero-three East Kentucky Road. This is a new information, public hearing.
Thank you, Mayor, members of the council. My name is Rick Arroyo, the Assistant Community Development Director here at the city. This rezoning was considered by Planning Commission on March twenty-eighth of this year. Planning Commission did vote in favor of this rezoning. Uh, this property is currently a legal non-conforming, single-family residential structure. The property owner, uh, has requested, uh, this rezoning match the actual property's use. I have no new information to provide.
Thank you. That'll close the public hearing.
Bill number twenty-three dash zero-three-four, an ordinance approving a rezoning from District C-one Neighborhood Commercial to District R-six, Single Family Residential, for the property at one-zero-one-zero-three East Kentucky, in Independence, Missouri. Second and final reading.
Any further discussion? Seeing none. Madam City Clerk, please call the roll.
Councilmembers Fears?
Yes.
Perkins?
Yes.
Stewart?
Yes.
McCandless?
Yes.
Steinmeier?
Yes.
Hobart?
Yes.
Mayor Rowland?
Yes. And this item is approved, seven in favor, zero against. This brings us to our second public hearing.
A public hearing for the application by Christopher Carter requesting a rezoning from C-one Neighborhood Commercial to R-thirty PUD, High Density Residential Planned Unit Development, for the property located at one-zero-one-zero-one East Kentucky Road. This is a new information-only public hearing.
Thank you again. This rezoning was also considered on March twenty-eighth of this year. Planning Commission did recommend in favor of it. Uh, this is the same property owner as the last application rezoning that you just saw. Uh, this one is currently legal non-conforming structure. The building, however, is a three-unit, uh, multifamily dwelling that has been that way for about forty years, from what we can tell. The applicant does wish to rezone it to its actual use. It would require an R-thirty PUD, uh, with an additional thirty percent density due to the size of the lot. Um, I have no new information to provide.
Okay, thank you very much. That'll close the public hearing. Any discussion? Seeing none. Uh, Madam City Clerk?
Bill number twenty-three dash zero-three-five, an ordinance approving a rezoning from District C-one Neighborhood Commercial to District R-thirty PUD, High Density Residential Planned Unit Development, and approving a preliminary development plan for the property at one-zero-one-zero-one East Kentucky Road, in Independence, Missouri. Second and final reading.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Madam City Clerk, please call the roll.
Councilmembers Fears?
Yes.
Perkins?
Yes.
Stewart?
Yes.
McCandless?
Yes.
Steinmeier?
Yes.
Hobart?
Yes.
Mayor Rowland?
Yes. And this item passes, seven in favor, zero opposed. This takes us to our third public hearing.
A public hearing for the application by Robert Hoover requesting a rezoning from R-six, Single Family Residential, to R-six, PUD, Single Family Residential Planned Unit Development, for the property located at two-seven-one-zero Southwestport Road. This is a new information-only public hearing.
Thank you again. This rezoning was considered by Planning Commission also on March twenty-eighth of this year. Planning Commission did vote in favor of this rezoning. Uh, this property is located at twenty-seven-ten Southwestport Road. It actually contains two single-family residents. Uh, a tenant had actually occupied the rear residence for six months without power. It, it did lose its legal nonconformity during that time. Um, since an R-twelve duplex zoning would not allow two single structures, nor would an R-eighteen PUD or an R-thirty, since they would have to be multifamily structures, the applicant did request an R-six PUD, uh, that was, uh, made to include the use of the second single-family structure. Um, I have no new information to provide.
This will close the public hearing. Thank you. Madam City Clerk?
Bill number twenty-three dash zero-three-six, an ordinance approving a rezoning from District R-six, Single Family Residential, to District R-six, PUD, Single Family Residential Planned Unit Development, and approving a preliminary development plan for the property at two-seven-one-zero Southwestport Road, in Independence, Missouri. This is a sec- second reading.
Any discussion? Any discussion? Madam City Clerk, please call the roll.
Councilmembers Fears?
No.
Perkins?
No.
Stewart?
No.
McCandless?
No.
Steinmeier?
No.
Hobart?
Nope.
Mayor Rowland?
No. This item fails, zero in favor, seven opposed. This takes us to us, to our final public hearing. This is in fact a full public hearing. Madam City Clerk?
Fiscal year twenty-twenty-three, twenty-twenty-four, proposed budget hearing. This is a full public hearing.
Is anyone here to speak in favor or in opposition to the budget?
Before I start, my apologies for the hat, terrible haircut. No, I don't need an attorney. I'm in here in favor of the, the budget. I'd like to speak. My address is Lucy, excuse me, my name is Lucy Young, twenty-three-twenty Viking Drive, Independence, Missouri, six-four-oh-five-seven. You guys probably know it by heart. The charter prohibits the city from running in a deficit budget, so the city council must either cut expenses or raise revenues. So I have a few suggestions. First, Mr. Walker started talking at his buzz- excuse me, budget presentation, several programs needing funding, including rental license compliance for twenty-five thousand, or Rentalscape STR software for nineteen-five, or records request software for our city clerk's office at seventeen thousand. Here's my suggestion on how to pay for these type of low-budget requests. Reduce the city council vehicle allowance. Currently, you each receive five hundred a month for the use of your cars. That is forty-two thousand dollars a year. Small potatoes, you say? I will remind you that there are no small potatoes in the city budget. That is almost half a million dollars in ten years. The Lee Summit City Council members receive a monthly car allowance of two-hundred-and-fifty dollars. They are paid only eleven thousand, four hundred dollars annually, where our council members are paid twenty thousand dollars annually. You are also covered by an insurance plan, which other cities do not offer city councils. Perhaps it's time for a new mayor and city council salary and benefit survey. Cut that expense. This will not help the twenty-twenty, excuse me, the twenty-three-twenty-four budget, as it would not come into effect until after the April twenty-twenty-four general election, but it would help in the future budget years. But it has to be approved now. Second, reverse the IPL six percent rate discount, as recommended by your advisory board. The PUAB approved that recommendation made by IPL staff. It was a nice experiment, but it failed. Mr. Walker stated that his budget included elimination of the six percent discount. But when you do so, be sure to include the removal of the municipal rate, so everyone has a level playing field with no advantage for the city over other large businesses with multiple buildings located here in Independence. All rates should have that discount removed. I understand your resistance to bring the IPL rate structure back to the two thousand and twelve level. I would like to remind you that recently there was an overwhelming council majority vote in favor of authorizing a study on how to either fix or sell IPL. Our IPL staff, the PUAB, and our city manager have offered their expertise on how to start down the path of fixing IPL. Please do your duty and remove that six percent discount. Last, Mr. Man- uh, the city manager spoke about a hiring chill. When I was on city council, we had furloughs because our budget could not afford to pay employees. I offered to donate, as others did, on the city council, our pay. We could not, it was against the law. So instead, we donated money to funds to help our employees. Right now, let's hold steady, let's hold fast. Yes, hire police. Yes, hire fire. Yes, keep our IPL staff intact. But those positions that we do not need to immediately fill, keep them on a hiring chill. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else wanna speak in favor, pardon me, please forgive me, anyone who wanna speak in favor or opposition to the city budget? Anyone wanna speak in favor or in opposition to the city budget? Third call, anybody here to speak in favor or in opposition to the city budget? Anybody here for informational purposes only. Seeing none. We'll close the public hearing. Please proceed. Oh, okay. This takes us to our second readings, and Madam City Clerk, please proceed.
Bill number 23-031, an ordinance demanding Chapter 1, Article 28, Independence Commission on Human Relations of the Independent City Code. Second and final reading.
Any discussion? Seeing none. Madam City Clerk, please call the roll.
Councilmember Fierce.
Yes.
Perkins.
Yes.
Stewart.
Yes.
McCandless.
Yes.
Steinmeier.
Yes.
Hobart.
Yes.
Mayor Rowland.
Yes, and this passes unanimously. Seven in favor, zero opposed. Madam City Clerk, please read the next bill.
Mr. Mayor, if I may.
Please.
I would indulge my colleagues that we postpone this ordinance until the next regular council meeting, June 5th. I would like to give it a little bit more digestion, kind of give it a little bit more review. I think there's some things I would like to have clarified just a little bit more strongly before proceeding. So if my colleagues would indulge, I'll make a motion to postpone until June 5th.
We have a motion to postpone till June 5th. Is there a second?
Second.
There's a motion and a second to postpone until June 5th. Any discussion on the postponement? Seeing no discussion. Madam City Clerk, please call the roll on postponing this item until June 5th.
Councilmember Fierce.
Yes.
Perkins.
Yes.
Stewart.
Yes.
McCandless.
Yes.
Steinmeier.
Yes.
Hobart.
Yes.
Mayor Rowland.
Yes. That item is postponed till June 5th by a seven to zero vote. Madam City Clerk, please read the next item.
Bill number 23-033, an ordinance authorizing the city manager to execute a certain grant agreement with the Department of Housing and Urban Development for the Square Streetscape Project, project number 111902, federal award number B23CPMO0905. Second and final reading.
Any further discussion on this item? Seeing none. Madam City Clerk, please call the roll.
Councilmember Fierce.
Yes.
Perkins.
Yes.
Stewart.
Yes.
McCandless.
Yes.
Steinmeier.
Yes.
Hobart.
Yes.
Mayor Rowland.
Yes. And this item has passed. Seven in favor, zero opposed. This takes us to our first readings, and the first one's an emergency, so we'll do this twice. So Madam City Clerk, please proceed.
Bill number 23-501, an ordinance authorizing the city manager to approve the governor's transportation cost share agreement with the Missouri Highways and Transportation Commission for the Little Blue Parkway and Jackson Drive Project, project number 112408, MoDOT project number SNS0020, increasing appropriations and declaring an emergency. Bill number 23-501, an ordinance authorizing the city manager to approve the governor's transportation cost share agreement with the Missouri Highways and Transportation Commission for the Little Blue Parkway and Jackson Drive Project, project number 112408, MoDOT project number SNS0020, increasing appropriations and declaring an emergency. Second and final reading.
Any discussion on this item? Seeing none. Madam City Clerk, please call the roll.
Councilmember Fierce.
Yes.
Perkins.
Yes.
Stewart.
Yes.
McCandless.
Yes.
Steinmeier.
Yes.
Hobart.
Yes.
Mayor Rowland.
Yes. And this item passes seven to zero. Okay. Madam City Clerk.
Bill number 23-037, an ordinance submitted to the registered qualified voters of the city of Independence, an ordinance proposing a repeal of Independent City Code of Ordinance Sections 3.03.006, Keeping of Pit Bulls Prohibited, and a review of Independent City Code of Ordinance Sections 3.03.007, Aggressive Dogs 3.03.008, Dangerous Dogs, and 3.03.009, Vicious Dogs, to assure protections for the citizens from any dangerous animals.
Okay. I have a question, if I may, Mr. Kovar, with regards to the process. And correct me if I'm wrong. Today is the notification that we have publicly that the group that put together the petition to overturn the pit bull ban, to summarize that, was in fact successful with hitting the petitions that they needed that were clarified in order to bring it to us, to either put it on the, you know, on the ballot. So can you walk me through the process, and what is our responsibility as a body going forward, since this is the first day of notification? We've got 30 days to act.
Sure. So you're correct. Today is the official notification date. I understand the council was aware generally prior, but this is the only way we can officially notify is by putting it as a, on the agenda. So that's, that's what makes today the official date. So the charter then gives the council 30 days to act, either to put the item on the ballot that shall occur- the charter says that shall occur in not less than 30 and not more than 90 days, or to adopt an ordinance that puts that language into effect in the city code. The reason that there is, you know, tonight, there's only one item on the agenda, and that is the for the ballot, that's because separate from the charter, there's also an election calendar to consider. And in order to comply with the charter of having it on an election within 90 days, that has to be certified by May 30th. So even though the 30-day clock for the charter started today, in order to comply with the election calendar, which is set by the state, that needs to be done by, by May 30th, if that's what you all choose to do. So while you have until June 15th to act within your 30 days in order to comply, if you wish to put it on the ballot, ideally, that would happen by May 30th in order to comply with the election calendar. But you still have both options are available to you, either to put it on the ballot or to adopt it as an ordinance in the city code.
Okay. So to summarize, so I've got it clear in my head, and make sure that you correct me if I'm wrong. We basically have 30 to 90 days to put it on, for the next, next possible election, or the charter would really, in fact, could force us to have a special election and pay for that, right? The way it's written?
Well, it, it ha- you're right. There has to be an election within 90 days. So if we didn't put it on the August, then, then yes, the other option would be to seek a special election. The problem is that fundamentally, that's up to the Jackson County Election Board, and it's my understanding that they're unwilling to, to do that, to hold that special election. So that's why if you wanted to have it as, as an election, that we would hit that, do the August election, because that's within the 90 days set by the charter.
Okay. So that way, we would qualify and be respectful of the charter and follow the charter.
Correct.
As you say. Okay. And so we do in fact have till June 15th to act according to the notification. However, to hit the deadlines for the election board, we'll have to make a decision before May, May 30th.
If you wanted to put it on the ballot.
Okay.
Ideally, that would happen prior to May 30th, so that, so that Ms. Barions could get that notification to them.
Okay.
If you were to take the other option of adopting into code, then that would, in order to say comply with the charter, happen by June 15th.
Okay. Very good. Any other questions or comments? Just to make sure everybody's clear and understands our responsibilities, because now the talk, the clock is ticking. Okay? No further discussion on that, then we've got the information items only. And I'll change up the order here. Councilmember Hobart, I'll start with you on councilmember comments, please.
Very good. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Briefly tonight, Mr. Walker. One comment. I, after your budget presentation last week, I had unsolicited received a number of comments from various and sundry sources, people that do pay attention, some very direct comments, actually, about how good your budget presentation was. In fact, people thought it was the best one you'd done yet. So I wanted to pass along that compliment to you, certainly your, and your staff. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Hobart. Councilmember Steinmeier?
Thank you, Mayor. Just a couple things. Tonight, I wanted to just express my condolences for the loss of a former council member that we had here in this city. Her name was Millie Nesbit. We lost her on Cinco de Mayo. And they're, they're my neighbors. They're good, they're good friends. They're, they love their city. They were business owners in, in Independence, and Millie did a great job, I think, serving our city. So it's a big loss for us when, when we lose someone who gave back to the city like that. So Bob's doing well. I saw him yesterday, so, and we'll just keep checking on him. That's, for those of you who know Butch Nesbit, that was his mom. So when you see him, you might just express your condolences as well. If I may, Mr. Mayor, I'd like to ask the city manager if I could address the city councilor, please?
Please proceed.
Okay, thank you. Getting people who are concerned about the fact that, and I'm one of them, who has not received any county assessments of, of our real estate. And I, I asked you the other day if, if you would look into it, see what the conditions that the county operates under, whether they have a timeframe, when, if, if we have any indication of when they're going to be sending these out. I know we're city, they're county, but a lot of people are concerned. So have you had an opportunity to look at that at all?
Yeah, I, I did look up the statute. So technically, per the statute, they have until June 15th. So I, I understand that historically, it's happened sooner than that, sooner, you know, than the deadline, and perhaps sooner, and perhaps sooner than now. But, but technically, you know, per the statute, they still have, you know, another month, actually, from, from today in order to comply. So I understand people might be getting impatient, but technically, they're still operating within the allowed timeframe.
Well, that's good to know. So, so I know we're all kind of concerned about what, what the dark message of the county is in terms of assessment on our real estate, but know that they still have some time. And if, what, is there anything that happens if they go beyond the 15th? Do you know? I mean, how are they, how do they hold themselves accountable?
I, I don't know what would happen if they hadn't done it by, by the 15th. If, if they haven't by the 15th, we'll certainly figure that out.
Okay. So we'll, we'll just keep an eye on it. Hopefully, we'll all start receiving those in the mail. So, thank you, Mr. Mayor. That's all I have tonight.
Thank you. Please proceed.
Just to piggyback on Millie Nesbit, she served as an at-large city councilperson from '82 to 1990, and was most proud during her service of her work for recognition of the Veil Mansion and on the National Frontier Trails Museum. So, nice to know that those things live past her service and, and past her time. I wanted to give a shout out to Independence Together, which is our program for partnering with Community Services League to employ people who are living without housing. And we have now been six weeks in this program. To this point, they have picked up 1,500 bags of trash, 39,000 pounds of garbage that they have picked up off the sides of the road. They have covered 90 miles of Independence roadway. They actually have 16 people enrolled in the program, with 30 people who are on the waiting list to be employed in this program. When we first got started, we weren't sure anybody was going to be interested, so I'm, I'm delighted that there's been that much interest. On a side note, it's not just about employing people right now and making our city look better, but some of these folks who haven't been in the employment system for a while, some have already moved on to other full-time positions. One lady opened her first bank account that she's ever had in her life. Four of them have completed their housing application interviews, and so we are in the process of doing what is long-term work to address the issue of homelessness. This is one of those points where multiple things that make the city better all come together. So I'm, I'm just delighted that the council would approve funds for that and that it's going so well. The city also had an opportunity for city employees to come, participate in Youth Mental Health First Aid, which is training for regular folks to be able to intervene with young folks when they may be having mental health challenges. 20 employees of the city completed that training, some because it was part of the work that they do with youth, others because they are either working Boy Scouts or areas where they're going to encounter young people, and some just because they are concerned about their own children and neighbors. So thank you for that opportunity. I think every chance we have to reach out and do right by young people is important for our city. And my very last thing is to say that someone I know, named Becky, is having a birthday today, and so it's always nice to be able to recognize and thank her for her good work.
Happy birthday. And she did give me a nod that it was okay for you to clap there.
I have nothing to add, Mayor. Thank you.
Thank you. Very good.
Just a comment that graduations have started at our local high schools, and just wanted to shout out to all those graduates. I know the, the Independence high schools are all graduating this coming weekend. I think Fort Osage went last weekend. And so congratulations to all those folks. And that's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you. And I've got a number of comments, so please bear with me. The 75th anniversary at the Truman Library, recognizing the recognition of Israel. That was done 75 years ago this May of President Truman, which was a very historic event and took tremendous bravery on his behalf. Also, I want to recognize Ginger's Breads and Treats. I typically don't recognize companies who have a ribbon cutting, but I want to recognize her company. And the reason being is, it is the fastest company to go from startup to being in their own building from the innovation center. They did it in less than a year. So that is truly remarkable. So I want to give a shout out to Ginger. We also, I don't know if I should say hell froze over here, but if you read the examiner on Saturday, there was a joint editorial between, with Jason White and Lucy Young, and those who follow independence politics find that truly remarkable and very, very close to hell freezing over. Just had to say that, Lucy. Just had to say that. Also, let's see. Oh, last Friday, we had the employee picnic, a great event. And for all those people who volunteered to make that happen, great work, and I really appreciate you doing that. So, thank you very much. Also, we had another mayor's trash cleanup on Saturday. Had 25 great volunteers. But I do in fact want to spotlight someone. Meg, is that set up to spotlight that individual? Here is a picture. You can see that on the left-hand side, we have Lydia. And she actually, I know you can't see it really well there, but she actually won a chalk contest, and her chalk contest theme was her picking up trash in Independence. So not only is she a very, very good artist, but she actually is so excited that her theme for her chalk contest was in fact picking up trash. So she came out. She centered in the picture there in the middle. You can see all of the trash bags that were gathered. That wasn't all of them. That was a little bit before we finished up. But I just wanted to tell her that she did a great job. She won a prize, and that she was helping pick up trash in our city. She was the youngest volunteer. We asked her what was the oddest thing that she found, and she said it was a fork. So, and along with Lydia, there was a great group of independents alive and well. They also came out for the trash pickup day, and I'd invite all of you to come out to our trash, past trick up, trash pickup days going forward. And I want to share with you some of the comments from Muriel, one of the members of independents alive and well. She said she loved the trash pickup day. It was a wonderful event for everyone to participate. It was well organized, well equipped, and I need to do a shout out to the staff of having it well organized and well equipped. So thank you, thank you, thank you. It was a way to meet the mayor and city council members and the commission members, and it was beneficial for all of us to make new friends and do our community a great service. So we want to thank those volunteers who came out for the trash pickup and the trash cleanup. So great job there. I just really appreciate the positive comments from the council tonight. Great job in that regard. And with that, I will call this meeting adjourned. Thank you all.